Good evening, I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, April 25th, 2016. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
President.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Guest Counselor Tiffany Partridge for Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Benards?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to say a special welcome to Ms. Partridge. We're very much appreciative that you've taken time to come and sit in Counselor Diana Dickey's chair for Ward Five. Welcome to our City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you here. All right, I will like to entertain a motion for additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor McCoy, do we have ...
We have none.
What do we have here?
There's no one.
Oh, all right.
We have none.
So we don't need a motion? We have additional written testimony. All right, thank you. Okay, we have time for counsel and city manager comment. Counselors, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to take just a moment to bring up a ...
That timer going.
Yeah, you better hurry. There we go, okay. I will call your attention to the slideshow about to begin. This is over at the State Fairgrounds. Every year, I tell you that the Camas Prairie is in bloom at the State Fairgrounds. I thought this year I'd bring you photos supplied by Ken Simila, who keeps me posted on whether the Camas Prairie is in bloom.
Oh, it looks much better on that one.
Is it? It's a little darker.
Just kind of let you have a look at it.
If you get a chance to go over, it's on Seventeenth and ...
Sunny View.
Yeah. Sunny Side.
Sunny View.
Sunny View.
Sunny Side.
Whatever.
Sunny Side starts with an S and ends with an E, and so it's in southeast.
Sunny View. It's just south of the fairgrounds entrance, the main entrance. So just call your attention to it. I hope you have a chance to go out and take a look at it. It's something that happens this time each year, and our friend Ken Simila has kept us posted for many years on this, so thank you.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you for that, and thank you for bringing the lovely photos, and please thank him.
I shall, thank you.
I've heard the announcement many times and seen them, but we've never had the photos here to show, so that's lovely. Thank you. Let's see, I had some, I saw some other hands. Counselor McCoy, did you have your hand up? And then Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Saturday night, my wife and I had a great time. We went to a Liberty House auction benefit and dinner. Had a wonderful time, saw a great group of people, but, boy, I'll tell you, that Liberty House not only does a great job for the community and what they're providing, they're growing, they raised, I know, well over six figures, into the six figures that evening, on that night. It was pretty impressive, the people in the room. They have as many of these charitable events do have, they had a paddle raise, and the paddle raise alone raised $87,000. So they had a very successful evening, it was great fun, and went to a wonderful, wonderful charity in our town that does great work for the children that need it in our area, so.
That's great.
Well done to them.
Lovely, thank you. All right, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to let folks know, this coming Saturday, from 10:00 to noon, we'll be up doing a cleanup on the Little North Fork. I put ten of these flyers up in the back as well. The North Saniam Watershed Council with Marion County, Marion Soil and Water Conservation District, part of a Sullivan event, U.S. Forest Service and others as well. Two hours, supposed to be nicer on Sunday, so you should come out to this on Saturday. Bring your boots, they'll provide gloves and tools and what have you. Pacific sanitation will take away the refuse for free, but our drinking water's set up there as well, and we need to be taken care of, so.
Wonderful, so what kinds of things will be cleaned up?
Garbage.
Oh, really?
We may do some invasives, but for the most part, it's cleaning up after people who aren't as cognizant of where their garbage should actually go.
All right, well, I want to say a big thank you to the volunteers for that, because it's definitely is needed. There was an article in either the Statesman or maybe the Oregonian with photos of some of these campsites, and it's very discouraging, so thanks for working on that.
Right, and this one's down lower, they do the one in the fall up at Detroit Reservoir as well. And Commissioner Cameron joined last time, he has some property up there as well, and was stunned and amazed when they wander into, you know, garbage central.
Right, right, well, thank you. It certainly is our drinking water, so thanks for working on that. Great, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ward Two bows to no one with respect to camas flowers.
Oh, dear. Are we going to have the war of the camas flowers?
Yes, and Bushes Pasture Park in my ward, which I fondly call the Central Park of Eugene, and the east end of the park, bowing lower than Fell Street, has rampant camas running throughout the entire park in a natural setting with other trees, and I encourage everybody else to go out there. Thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Excuse me, Central Park of Salem, thank you.
I thought maybe your ward had been expanded.
No. It's all part of my master plan.
Counselor Benards.
I just wanted to shout out at this point, oftentimes people say they don't get notification of meetings that are coming up. Every Wednesday night in this room, at 6:00 PM, the Budget Committee will be meeting. Usually goes roughly two to three hours, and every week is usually a different topic. It'll be going this Wednesday, in fact, it has been going now for the last several weeks, but the last meeting is April 11th, so just come on down. I would double-check the agenda on cityofsalem.net to see what is coming on the agenda for that evening, so if you can come down and you have a particular like of something you want to testify about, come on in, we need people. Last week, we only had three that testified.
Fire. It's Fire Department.
Fire Department, oh, this week is Fire Department. Oh, that'll be interesting, thank you. Anyway, just to let people know.
Thank you. All right.
Mail up. Yeah, it's mail up.
Did someone else have their hand up?
Thank you.
City Manager, would you have any comments?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing, okay, all right, thank you. All right, well, we have a proclamation this evening, which is actually, I think, an exciting sort of live theater, because it's more than just a proclamation, it's a proclamation and awards and celebrations, so would, I think, Jan Stravinsky, Stravinsky? Did I say that right? No.
Not even close.
I know every year I try to learn how to say your name properly, I do apologize. Okay. God. First, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we have special awards to discuss. So, whereas the city of Salem is one of only seventeen cities in the country that have a charter participant in the Tree City USA program since 1976, and the first city in Oregon to receive a Tree City USA 40th Year Award from the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas, for the 40th consecutive year, the city of Salem has met the requirements for Tree City USA due to its urban forestry program supported by a minimum dollar per capita of public funds, a tree ordinance, and formal Arbor Week activities. And whereas, the city of Salem has also achieved Sterling City status for ten Tree City USA Growth Awards in recognition of the city exceeding the goal set by the Arbor Day Foundation. Whereas, in recognition of our 40th year as Tree City USA and becoming a Sterling City, the city of Salem will commence a Year of Tree events to celebrate our urban forest. Now therefore, I, Anna Peterson, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim the period between April 2016 and April 2017 as Salem's Year of the Tree, and encourage all people of Salem to recognize the city of Salem's advancement as a Tree City USA for forty years, and to participate in the many planned events throughout the next twelve months. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you, and to ask you to also participate with me as we talk about the Arbor Day awards. These awards, this is really exciting, because we don't very often have so many people that are involved in something having a chance to really be recognized here at the city of Salem. So as part of our 40-year celebration to bring a Tree City USA, I'm sorry, I'm going to start over, as part of our 40-year celebration of being a Tree City USA, the city of Salem held a poster contest earlier in the year. The theme of the contest was City Trees, City Beautiful, and was designed to help inspire a greater appreciation of trees as we celebrate Salem's community forest. These posters will be used throughout the year to help advertise our Year of the Tree events. Public participation for the contest was wonderful, we received over 300 amazing entries. I'm glad I didn't have to be the one to choose the finalists, that would be very difficult to do. The judges did, however, wade through, and they found winning entries in each category. Our community has many creative and talented artists, we all know that, we're pretty famous for our art. Tonight, we're presenting these artists with a framed copy of their artwork, and perhaps if you'd like to come forward, Karen Kruger in the adult division. Did you want me in or out? Oh, all right.
I'll wait for the city to post my Facebook, and then I can just steal it from there.
Okay, are we good? All right, Hannah Cruzen, and her family and teacher Connie Toland, Ms. Toland's class is at Sprague High School. Welcome, congratulations. Aspen DeCencini, I'm sure I said it wrong, but if you'll correct me, that would be wonderful. Your name is?
Aspen DeCencini.
Aspen DeCencini, lovely. And the category that you were in is, do we know? I'm sorry.
Middle school.
Oh, middle school, all right, here we are. And last but not least, Sophia Miller, I think her family might be here, from Ms. Shaddick's class at St. Joseph's School. Welcome, Sophia. Congratulations. All right, now, I think we wanted to do a photo with everyone in front of this flag, so we'll take a moment and let everybody get down here, and this is just lovely, this is really wonderful. Okay, oh, you want me in there too?
Yes, sir.
All right, yeah, I'll give you all that.
You know what, I'm going to take the names off. You've got to look a little nicer in the picture. There we go. All right, all right, where do you want me?
Right there, there.
A little bit. Maybe you can step forward a little bit, I want you to be seated. Okay, I'll call, that seems good.
Where is that on mine? Thank you. All right, and the Tree City USA award goes to, oh, it's being presented by Kristin Ramstead, the Community Assistance Forester at the Oregon Department of Forestry. I thought maybe you were on our staff, and I was going to say, well, we haven't met before, but this is lovely, I'm glad to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed City Council, excellent city staff, and gentle guests. Earlier today, I was reading an article that quoted the well-regarded tree benefit researcher David Noack as saying, "If you plant only one tree, plant it in a city." This is because city trees give you the biggest bang for your buck in myriad ways. For example, research shows that shoppers in well-landscape business districts are willing to pay more for parking and up to 12% more for goods and services. I'm not sure this is great news for shoppers, but it is a good thing for cities. According to a 2008 Forest Service research report, in Portland, homes with attractive street trees sold for slightly over $7,000 more than comparable houses on untreed or less attractive-treed streets. Trees in Davis, California parking lots reduced asphalt temperatures by as much as 36 degrees Fahrenheit over, you know, several days, you know, each day over several days. And why this is important is because when you keep your asphalt relatively cool, you actually prolong the life of your asphalt and the expenses related to replacing the asphalt. And those trees also reduced car interior temperatures by over 47 degrees Fahrenheit. By heißen to add, you still don't get to leave Fido in your car as a result. Shade from these trees also decreased the volatilization of gasoline from parked cars as well, so they also had an air quality effect as well. So I could go on about the benefits of trees, and how more and more studies not only talk about the economic and environmental effects of city trees, but also the health benefits that researchers are getting harder and faster numbers for, which is pretty exciting. So obviously, trees in our cities are really vital. So this is why I'm so glad to be here tonight, as a representative of the Oregon Department of Forestry and the Arbor Day Foundation, to celebrate Salem's accomplishment for being a Tree City for 40 years. Tree City USA is a nationwide community improvement initiative sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation and administered in Oregon by the Oregon Department of Forestry. It is a recognition shared by only 57 cities across Oregon. The city of Salem was an early adopter of the Tree City USA program, and is actually one of only sixteen cities, so it makes it even more exclusive.
Which one?
Sixteen American cities, and Salem is the only 40-year-old Tree City west of the Rockies. What this means is that for 40 continuous years, the city of Salem has met the four standards of a Tree City USA, which, whoops, which were read earlier, and I won't go into now. However, I do want to say that being a Tree City does not necessarily mean that a city has a perfect tree program, that every tree in the city is perfectly pruned, that parks are free of tree risk, or that tree controversy and conflict don't happen. After all, being a Tree City USA is not about being an urban forestry camelot. It's about meeting the four standards year after year, understanding that a well-managed, healthy urban forest is an important tree, a city amenity that increases in value over time, and that engaging city residents to care about trees results in a better community for all. Partnering with Friends of Trees over the last few years, and planting trees with residents throughout the city is a testament to that. So doing anything for 40 years is a significant accomplishment, so this is something that Salem residents should be impressed by and proud of. In addition to being recognized for its 40-year accomplishment, Salem also received a Tree City USA Growth Award this year. Growth awards are earned by cities who go above and beyond the four Tree City USA standards. This year, the city revised its public tree ordinance and created standards and specification, a standards and specifications document to work in tandem with the new tree code. These types of codes and documents take an amazing amount of coordination and work by city staff and affiliated committee members, and they also ultimately need to make it through a public process as well, so this year's growth award was particularly well-earned. So, without further ado, I want to congratulate you again, and it's really a wonderful accomplishment, so.
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate you coming, and we certainly do appreciate the efforts of everyone who helped Salem maintain its status as a Tree City USA. I'd like to take a minute and also say a very special thank you to Patricia Farrell, who's sitting here. Patricia, please stand up, so people who don't know you will know who you are. Patricia has worked very hard on it. Congratulations, Patricia, congratulations. I want to also point out, we have as guests in our audience, Cassia Quillanen is here, and she is the Chair of our Salem Public Parks Advisory Board, which now also has responsibility over the street trees that are in our, I guess you would call them rights-of-way, right-of-way and along the streets, et cetera, in addition to those in the park. And I want to say, thank you, Woody, you came on that board, we really appreciate having your expertise as a particularly knowledgeable person about trees, and I'm just very excited about the work that's being done by the board and by the staff, so thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations to our award winners for the poster contest. Lovely, thank you.
And the Oregon Department of Forestry is a sponsor of the cleanup this coming Saturday. Well, the only name that I didn't read off from the sheet of the event sponsor, so sorry about that.
Well, well done. Great, okay. We now have time for public comment, and I wonder if anyone has signed up? Yes, we actually have Cassia Quillanen has signed up. Yes, please. Ah, David's going to speak. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. In regard to trees, cities are called urban heat islands for a good reason. They have a lot of surfaces in them which retain the sun's heat, and they are usually several degrees hotter than the surrounding areas. My parents' place was several miles out east of town, and it's surrounded by fir trees, and in the summertime, if you go from downtown Salem out there, there's about 10 degrees difference. That's a significant difference. And also, we pat ourselves on the back, because we're this Tree City USA, but just in my neighborhood in the past year, I've seen about 20 trees come down, including some big firs, but they're on private property, so you can't do anything about it. So we need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I certainly do appreciate all of the efforts that have been going on in the neighborhoods and throughout the community to replace trees that have come down, and also to bring trees to areas of the city that are not as well-treed, because I remember many times going door-to-door throughout the community, and there are some neighborhoods that really are sadly without the tree canopy, and it really does make a difference in the atmosphere and the comfort, as well as the overall ambiance in those neighborhoods. So I encourage people to keep planting the trees, absolutely. All right, did anyone else come this evening that wanted to provide public comment and didn't get signed up? Well, now it's Cassia's turn. Thank you, I didn't mean to slight you.
I didn't know I was going to be upstaged by my husband, but that happens frequently.
I'm not going to get into the middle of that.
No, I wouldn't if I were you. So, anyway, counselors and Madam Mayor, I'm here as the Chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and we have submitted to you this evening our 2015 annual report, and I would just like to call your attention to a couple of things. One is that we did rewrite the mission statement of Salem Parks and Recreation Board, and I'll just read it to you. "The mission of Salem Parks and Recreation Board is to promote and enhance the quality and availability of Salem's parks, recreational facilities, city-owned trees, and gardens, and to ensure a legacy of open green spaces, outdoor experiences, and the preservation of the natural environment as a desired and desirable community amenity for all of Salem citizens." And I think that about sums up what we're trying to do with the Parks Board. Also, in light of our discussion about trees, we do note that we, the Salem city, takes care of about 105,000 street trees and about 30,000 park trees. It's probably actually more than that, and we have been on a pretty strong planting schedule this year. A couple of highlights from our accomplishments this year, we did manage to get a couple of master plans going, which was really nice. One of our goals for 2016 was the Sustainable Fairview Park Master Plan, and we got that done in record time. It's done, and it's a wonderful plan. The outreach to the public was just absolutely terrific, and everybody decided what they wanted out there, so it worked. And now we're heading towards Battle Creek with some, you know, additional stops on the way to assess the wetlands and things like that. So we've had a pretty good year, we're, I wouldn't say eagerly anticipating our first tree conflict, but it will certainly be interesting when we get it. The other thing I'd like to do is acknowledge our staff person, Toni Whitler, who's over here in the audience, she's absolutely wonderful, and our couple of other board members, Woody Dukes and Rick Retsman are here with me this evening. And I just have one quick announcement, which is, on April 30th, from 9:00 AM to noon, we're going to have a walk in the park. It's a two-mile walk in Riverfront Park and Wallace Marine Park. It begins at Riverfront Park Pavilion, or at the Wallace Marine Park at the Railroad Bridge, and there's various stations along the way, and you can walk through the park, and it's like $5, and it raises money for good causes and stuff like that. And you can bring your dog, which is important. So I'm here if you have any questions.
Wonderful, thank you for the report, and thank you, Cassia, for all the work that you've done over the years for the city of Salem, for the residents of Salem, and the fine leadership that you've really provided to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Are there questions from counselors? All right.
Okay, very good.
Thank you again. All right, we will move now to the consent calendar. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.3B by Counselor Anderson.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor McCoy, and seconded by Counselor Benards to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.3B, which is being polled by Counselor Anderson. All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, I should ask first discussion. Did you want to review the consent calendar?
I'd like to review those other items. 3.3A is authorizing the city manager to amend the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Salem and the Saniam Water Control District, and it extends the notice of termination deadline for the current renewal period. There's been a 50-year working agreement with, between the Saniam Water Control District and city of Salem, starting in '66. It's running, it's due to end here at the end of the month. We're extending that for a few weeks while some negotiations go on with revised language for maybe a new future agreement dealing with the same thing. We share water rights in the North Saniam, or deal with water on the North Saniam. We also authorize the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the city of Hillsborough for the sale of 56 cubic feet per second.
That's pulled.
Well, that's the one that's pulled, I'm sorry.
We will be talking about that soon.
We're going to talk about that one soon.
Right.
The next one, second, we approve the attached amendment to purchase and sale agreement with Sustainable Fairview Associates LLC to extend the closing date for the acquisition of 29 acres for the use of a community of 29 acres for the use of a community park. And finally, we authorize the city manager to execute a lease with FWX Inc., which is Footwear Express in the Shemekah Parkade, to lease property in the Shemekah Parkade for a 10-year period starting commencing August 1st of this year.
And that's it? All right. Is there any further discussion regarding those items that are on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to our public hearing. All right. This public hearing is closed, and so no further testimony is permitted, but it is now time for a motion concerning the recommended action. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Ben Arns to move the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the capital improvement plan for the fiscal year 2016-17 through 2020 to 2021, and that is attached in our staff report. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Yes. Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Anderson.
Yes, Madam Mayor, two things, if I may, to talk with Mr. Fernandez, just briefly. We received a letter from Sherlene Gonzalez regarding master planning for parks, and could you just speak to this, kind of what's going on here? I thought her points were well-taken and wanted to understand better what was going on.
Yes, certainly, Counselor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. I believe there were two issues raised by Ms. Gonzalez in her letter. The first is, are our parks' master plans funded? The answer is yes. In fact, at the Budget Committee meeting two weeks ago, we talked about funding a full-time parks planner to begin to more systematically address parks' master plan issues. You heard from Ms. Quillanen that we, in fact, do parks' master plans and have been very successful at it. I think our staff does an excellent job of running those processes. There are a lot of parks that need them. We could move more expeditiously if we had the full-time position, and that's why it's there. Plans used to be in the CIP. A couple of years ago, we took that funding out of the CIP because the CIP is really intended for capital projects, not for planning. So, planning now is in the budget, not in the CIP. But certainly, parks' master plans are part of that budgeting process. In fact, council saw a staff report a few weeks ago that spoke to the, kind of the priority order for parks' master plans. I believe the second issue in her letter dealt with something to the effect, why are we master planning if we don't have money to develop parks, or something to that effect. That's an excellent point. We really, the funds to develop parks are limited. The funds to maintain newly-developed parks are limited. However, the master plans for these properties are very important because often neighbors want to do something at an undeveloped park, and without a master plan, we really have a hard time agreeing to something being done because we don't know what the future holds. So, by having more properties master planned, we are able to then work with neighbors who perhaps want to make an investment in the park, want to do something in the park, to make sure they're consistent with the master plan that's been worked with with neighbors and ultimately adopted by the City Council.
How many parks do we open per year? I mean, do we move from sort of master plan to open park?
We have been on a one-per-year clip. I don't know how long that's going to last, but I know the, for example, the Home Builders Association had expressed a concern a couple of years ago that all these parks have been reserved, all this SDC money's been collected, yet a lot of parks in newly-developed areas aren't opened. We've proceeded with this new idea called the pre-development of parks. The first one that we've done in pre-development mode, I spoke to it in my budget presentation, is Yola Ridge Park. I think it turned out beautifully up in West Salem. It's right off of Yola Drive, and it basically has three lawns, some wooded area, a creek that is being restored, and it's just a ribbon of concrete that goes from the top of the hill and meanders down to the bottom of the hill with some benches and a couple of picnic tables. Just a great property for people to be able to enjoy, but it awaits playgrounds, picnic shelters, you know, whatever else is in the master plan. So, I think what the future holds for these kinds of properties is this kind of pre-development where the properties are beautiful, are usable, and all we have to do to maintain them is mow them.
And then, one more, Madam Mayor. You bring me to my final question is really, and kind of what led, I think, for me anyway, holding this up just a little bit to think about it, and to hear you speak to it maybe one more time on the Bike Boulevard.
Of course.
Coming down Maple and Winter. In the, it sounds like you're saying the planning grant doesn't show up in the CIP, it will show up in our budget.
Right.
And then, how will this project, I know the advocates for this, and I have a substantial number in my ward, and I know they're citywide, are interested in how this will move forward then. What's the next milestone? Once the grant is underway, can it, can we begin looking for funding, or does the grant need to be used, the plan totally completed, and then we move forward looking for funding, which is really what gets it into the CIP, if I understand you correctly?
Right. So, we have a grant from the Transportation Growth Management Program from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Those are planning grants, so that grant has funded the ability to take the idea of this Bike Boulevard from a concept that's in the transportation system plan to what exactly are we going to build? What, how are we going to bring this Bike Boulevard to fruition? So, once we enter into the intergovernmental agreement with ODOT, we will begin that process. That'll take 12 months, more or less. We'll want a lot of public involvement. We'll want a lot of involvement from the neighbors as we come up with what we want to do to enhance bicycling, novice bicycling, right, family bicycling in that area, which is what the Bike Boulevard is about. Once we have that in place, we will know what we want to build. We will have an idea for what that's going to cost, and then we will start to seek funding. Some of the funding may well be the 1% set aside that the state requires for bicycle facilities, or there could be other grant funds, or there could be a future bond issue. I mean, there could be any number of things, but once that funding is identified, then we will propose it in the CIP. Because again, the CIP is about construction projects, and this project is in the planning phase. The fact that we are planning for it, my experience in Salem for 21 years is, once we have a master plan for something, we almost always find funding for it. So, the fact that we've been able to, that we have money to move it from concept to a plan is an exciting time for that project, and I would foresee that if not in the next year CIP, certainly in the one after that, that we would, hopefully, we'd have funding identified, and we'd be able to propose it to the council.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Director Fernandez, you pretty much addressed the bike issues because I was one of those people who also had some concerns about the capital improvement plan, specifically the potential of saying, let's put a place marker in there, $50,000 or some figure. It would have to be above 50 or above because, to make it into the plan. And we delayed it till we could see what you had to say in your budget presentation, and we asked you some more questions there. And having heard all that, I'm satisfied that what you said is going to happen. That is, we're spending all this money on planning. It's clear that this is the council's will, that we want these things, and I'm confident that we will soon have it, or as soon as you can move in bureaucratic time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I hope I haven't lost track of where we are, but I believe we have the consent calendar on the floor. Is that right? No. I'm sorry, we're into the public hearing. I apologize. All right. So, we have a motion for the public hearing, a motion for the recommended action, and that motion was by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Ben Arns. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Ben Arns.
I just, walking through this, I was amazed by the number of different funds that we get money from in order to pay $126 million in improvements over the next five years. And there are a few in here that I didn't necessarily recognize. The re-tech, there's a state grant, it doesn't say much more than that, but anyway, it's just interesting, if you wanted to take a second about saying, this is more than just simply money that's coming from the City of Salem, taxpayers, utility payers. This is, some of this money's coming from the Oregon Energy Trust, some of it's coming from FEMA. The sources are a multitude, and I suspect they're leveraged from what we have here.
That is correct, Counselor, and grants are rarely free, so they usually require some kind of match. So, we, yeah, there's all kinds of opportunities. Our staff, and when I say our staff, I mean, urban development staff and airport staff and public work staff are all fairly expert in finding those opportunities. So, and then, list them. And if you look in your, a couple of years ago, we made a change to the way the capital construction budget is presented, so that, you know, one page, the left hand of the pages, the left hand of the book is the project, and the right hand is all of the funding sources, so that you can see that a lot of projects carry two, three, and four different funding sources to make them a reality.
Well, I certainly noticed that at a minimum, we're putting $13 million a year just in our utilities, moving up to, within five years, up to better than $20 million per year in improvements on, what I understand, are some really old sewer and water lines that are in the ground that are literally 100 years old at this point. So, I just wanted to talk it up and say it's a great thing to have happen.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see some of that money come back to our community from other sources.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We'll now move to special orders of business, which in fact is item 3.3B. Counselor Anderson, would you like to introduce a motion regarding this item?
I certainly would, Madam Mayor. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the City of Hillsborough for the sale of 56 cubic feet per second of the City of Salem's Willamette River water right.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Ben Arns. Counselor Anderson, would you like to discuss the motion?
I would, and this is, I suppose on one level, some people could look at this as kind of scary if we're giving away our rights to the water in perpetuity, so I thought it was important to bring it out to have a discussion because once we understand what's going on here, it is not that scary. So, I've got a few questions for Director Fernandez to help the discussion. I learned a new acronym here, which is CFS, which is cubic feet per second, they're feet per second, and it says right now, we have 239 CFS in water rights on the North Saniam River, which is where we, from where we draw our water. I'm curious, Director Fernandez, how much are we using of those 239 CFS on a regular basis?
So, I don't operate in CFS. I operate in MGD, million gallons per day. So, those 239 cubic feet per second are equivalent to 148 million gallons per day. And the City of Salem, this past summer, used, our maximum day was 44 million gallons. So, we have an extensive reserve of water rights in the North Saniam River where we draw our water from, and we are, I can't say it enough, how blessed and grateful we are to our forefathers. And I usually say forefathers and foremothers, but in the 1930s, it was, it was all guys. That they acquired those rights. Those rights are fully certificated, so we have a right to pull every gallon of water on the day we need it. We do extensive analysis all the time to see what our needs are and what we predict our needs to be. We don't foresee hitting what we can produce and deliver to town, which is 66 million gallons per day, for another 100 years. So, to reach 148 million gallons would be an astronomical growth. So, what we own on the North Saniam River is more than enough. The blessing then extends because somebody thought it prudent to buy 200 cubic feet per second on the Willamette River. Those rights are not fully certificated. Those rights are on what's called a permit, which is an intermediate step because we can, we don't yet have the ability to make beneficial use of them.
Could I interrupt you for a second? You said fully certificated twice now, and perhaps you could explain what that is.
That means that, so there's several steps in owning a water right. Oregon water law requires that you show that you can bring that right to beneficial use, and we've proven that we can bring all 148 million gallons on the North Saniam River to beneficial use. We cannot prove that on the Willamette River because we don't even have a treatment plant on the Willamette River. So, but we own those rights. We have a permit that extends to the year 2080, I believe, because municipalities have special rights because the state understands that we need to plan for the long term. So, we have those additional rights, and I'll tell the council right here and now that if we ever offered other rights, I'll probably bring it to you for purchase because it is like gold. But at this point, what we have is the City of Hillsborough is in need of water. Unlike the City of Salem, they have a lot of industry that is water-intensive, and they see continued growth, so they are, I don't want to use the term desperate, but they are in need of creating water, and there aren't any other rights on the river that are attainable. So, they approached us, and we looked at it. We asked our water rights attorney what he thought, and he said this was a good deal. To be able to monetize a right that really we won't need for a very long time, and then to be able to use that money for other needs in the utility, which are endless, as Counselor Ben Arns was speaking to previously, that's why we brought it to council and recommended it, because we think it's a good opportunity.
A couple of follow-up questions, Mayor. First, we're selling 56 CFS with the option of obtaining up to 44 of additional water, and as well as the option, there's something about the right of first refusal, and I see that's explained in Section 2.2 and 2.3 of the contract. You know, my way of thinking, a right of first refusal is if we had somebody else offer us, we would first have to go to Hillsborough and say, somebody's offered us this, can you match that? So, what happens if, at the time when we can, that right can be exercised, nobody has offered us any other money other than the City of Hillsborough? How do we negotiate on that 56 again, or is it fixed at the price that we've already sold it?
So, the amount that they are purchasing, that price is fixed at $400 an acre foot, and we're throwing different, it all equates, but they're all different ways of talking about the same thing.
I always think of things as swimming pools full of water, if you want to throw that one in, too.
So, the option rights and the rights of first refusal are at whatever the future value of the water is, so it's not, so they're purchasing the 56. The additional water is really at a price to be determined.
Right, so we're not locked in.
When that comes to term. And the right of first refusal is simply, we don't see, as we sit here today, we don't see another buyer for the water, but if one were to show up, and council felt
Got it.
that it was the right thing to do, the first step would be to call Hillsborough and say, we have an offer on the table for X amount. Do you want it or not?
There's two issues here. The one is, if no one else offers us anything for the water at the time period specified, we renegotiate with Hillsborough for their option to purchase up to another 44 CFS. Or we, yeah, well, if we can't sell it, we don't sell it. But if somebody offers us, we have to go to Hillsborough and say, this municipality has offered us, you have the opportunity to match it.
We will cut our best deal with We will cut our best deal with the other municipality and then Hillsborough will either match it or not match it.
Then my final question is, uh, what's gonna, what's gonna happen to this money? How are we gonna use it? And where it'll come through?
Well, it's coming into Fund 310, the utility fund, uh, and it, and it's being paid. So, so, so let's, let's back up. The, uh, there's a process now, uh, Hillsborough has, has, frankly, if the council approves it tonight, Hillsborough has told us that they've already cut the check and will have it in the mail tomorrow to us. So there's a $100,000 deposit and that basically allows them to begin the process of transferring the right. And that will take anywhere between nine months and a year, Jason. Uh, so there, there's a lot of legalities that they have to go through. Once they are approved for, uh, once the, once the transfer's fully approved and they get a certificated right because they have to prove up their use, then they will, uh, pay us in five equal installments with interest accruing between installments. So, uh, so I expect that, uh, that we'll get our first installment of 2.8 million dollars, I believe, about a year from now and then four other installments after that. So we got about six years before, uh, all the money is in. Uh, the needs of the utility are endless. Uh, one of the needs, the mayor's most favorite need, and, and I understand it completely, is, uh, is the need for a new administration building and new working facilities at the shops. Our sense is that's a 25 to 30 million dollar building with the utility being about two-thirds to three-quarters of that cost because there's some streets and parks, uh, facilities as well. These are pennies from heaven. Uh, that's a good way to go. Uh, at some point, the council will have input because anything that we do has to be in the CIP.
Yes, sir.
And in the budget. So, so as that money starts to flow in, we will start to have, uh, those discussions about how, how best to spend that money.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Ben Arz.
Actually, the first question that I was going to ask is, has been asked, what are we going to do with this money? And it sounds like it goes into the utility fund, ergo, it must be spent on utilities and not on other things that we keep talking about, such as parks are not one of the things that we can spend money on from this particular supply. I wanted to talk just a second. I saw somewhere along the way, a chart showing in the city of Salem, the water consumption is actually going down and I've heard that we've had actually revenue dropping because of this. Can you take a second and speak to the water use? One would think over years, instead you'd be ramping up in the water use and that's not happening.
It's a, it's an interesting, uh, it's an interesting thing. In 1992, we hit a 66 million gallon day over the summer. And, uh, when I started working here in 95, uh, there was terror in, in the hearts of utility planners that we were going to run out of water because my, we can't deliver 66 million. We certainly couldn't deliver 66 million gallons in 92. What happened since then is, uh, we've never hit that again. So then we had a target of, boy, let's try to never hit more than 50 million gallons in the summer. And then we weren't hitting, uh, you know, we weren't even hitting that and we're not hitting that. Uh, what's happened? Uh, we lost a lot of, uh, food processing that were intensive water users. We lost Mitsubishi silicon, which was an intensive water user. And all these low-flow fixtures that houses use make a difference. Uh, this is an issue, it's a good, it's a good issue for the environment, a bad issue for the water company. Uh, this is happening all over the country. Americans are using less water. Uh, the low-flow fixtures and water becoming more expensive has, have conspired for people to drop their usage of water. Uh, Las Vegas is the perfect example. Las Vegas doubled in population and halved their water consumption all at the same time. So, so there's a lot of this awareness. Uh, so then it puts the utility in kind of a tough situation because we have, we have, we have to deliver that water no matter how much people are using. We have to, people have to, you have to have it at your tap, ready to go no matter what. So that's been an issue that we've dealt with over the years. Uh, we've seen consumption start to level out, uh, start to climb a little bit. So, uh, so that's been a positive, uh, for, uh, for the funding. So the, the good news is we have to build more newer growth facilities, but we still have to replace the old facilities. And that's, yeah, that's the kind of financial issue that we've been dealing with for 10 years.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm not going to digress into a certain golf course that is, I think, our biggest water user in question.
It is.
It's going to continue or not, but, uh, it's going to have another impact. Because when they don't consume, they don't pay. If they don't pay, we can't do the improvements and the pipes are still in the ground, things are still happening and we still have to take care of it.
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Namke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've discussed in the past that we need to be working towards more water supply. Um, and if we're, we haven't perfected some of those within 20 years, we're too late. But we're still looking for groundwater rights. Because even after this whole transaction, we'd end up with, uh, still 100 cubic feet per second coming out of the Willamette. But the rest of the country is running out of water and, uh, it would do us well to, to really focus on, uh, how we get there down the line because they will be moving here, uh, because they will not be able to function in a lot of the, uh, the locations that industry currently is. And so, um, I don't, it's a fairly young water right as far as getting rid of that one. Um, and with the other balance we have and other potentials as well with groundwater and what have you to supplement that. Um, I'm happy with that. It'll be nice to actually utilize some funding to potentially do some seismic issues as well. Um, so, look forward to that discussion.
Yeah. So the, the construction budget actually has money in it to, uh, begin to study the groundwater, the, the ground wells, uh, as a, as a supplemental source. So that's something we're going to start to study. We do own water rights in East Salem, uh, groundwater rights. We own groundwater rights in West Salem. So that is something that, uh, and then, and then can we get more efficiency out of our aquifer storage and recovery wells as well?
Right.
So, yeah. We're, we're well aware of the issue and are, and are studying it. And some of this money may have to go to, you know, in the end, the needs are, you know, it's all in the same pot. So the need for a building, the need for groundwater wells, the need to replace Upper Bennett Dam, the, you know, all these needs are, are all cumulative.
I hear about Upper Bennett Dam once a month.
Well, I would like to ask a question which probably maybe other people know the answer to, but I don't have a clue. And that is, how does Hillsborough then access those water rights?
Yeah. So they, so they move the intake, uh, further down river. It's easier to move your, the right down river than it is to move it upriver because you're not impacting other owners when you go upriver. Uh, when you move down river, you don't impact other, other owners. So, so part of the work that they will do with the Oregon Water Resources Department is moving their intake location, getting the right assigned to them and then getting it, uh, certificated because, so that they prove that they can use it.
I see.
And so they have, they have quite the process in front of them.
Thank you. That helps. I was envisioning great big pipes from Salem, Oregon, all the way to Hillsborough. I knew that wasn't going to be the answer.
Although there will be a great big pipe from where they take in the Willamette to Hillsborough.
I see.
Great big open pipe running right up there.
We hope not. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. In your, uh, agenda this evening, there are three information reports and if anyone has questions on those, we'd be glad to entertain those right now. We already did talk about the Year of the Tree proclamation. I want to bring that attention, uh, bring that to your attention again. And, um, and the, the members of our Parks Board are here, so we appreciate them being here. We appreciate, uh, so much the report that you've provided. Counselors, are there any questions? Do you have any questions regarding the report from the Parks Board? Counselor Anderson, did you have your hand up? No? All right.
Believe it or not, I did not, Mayor.
Oh, well. In my dreams, I just see that.
Or nightmares.
No, not, not at all. All right. All right. No questions from counselors, but thank you for being here, Casia, and, and again, for your leadership and all of the work. If you'd like to say something else, because I know at the beginning, you only had three minutes and, so.
Well, I think on the whole, the Parks Board really tries to do its best to be a good steward of parks and to get as many of them developed as possible. We deal with a whole lot of different issues, everything from riparian restoration to, you know, species of trees. Now, we're going to become quite experts on trees, I hope. Um, and all the various types of facilities and things that we do put in parks. And this master planning process has been just a, a lot of fun and so I encourage everybody to come down and participate, as well as the public should come and participate when we send out notices of these parks' master planning processes because they're, they're just lots of fun. And you get to see all kinds of groovy maps. So, on the whole, it's a, it's a really fun group of people. They're knowledgeable, they're energetic, they're enthusiastic. I mean, we had some wonderful presentations, uh, recently on the, the Wallace, uh, baseball, softball tournament fields and what we're going to be doing to them. The gal who was the, uh, head of, uh, Deepwood and came over and was highly energetic about the projects that she was involved with, uh, Deepwood. So, it's just fun. You learn a lot of different things and it's, uh, a very enjoyable experience for the most part. And I know Tony's trying to talk me into re-upping for another term, but I don't know about that yet. So, anyway. So that's all I've got to say. Besides which, we all look very cute in our new picture in the annual report.
I love that picture. That's a great picture.
Yeah.
Lovely. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate again, your service. All right. We will move, uh, we don't have any ordinance. Is there anyone here for public comment? No one? All right. My goodness. Oh, David. We'll put your name on the list right this minute. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. My name is David Engen. I live in Ward 1. Speaking of water, last summer was the first time I've ever seen Detroit Lake empty. Uh, I mean, I, we should really start considering these things despite the fact that we're using less water. Uh, we're going to grow and we're going to use eventually more. But anyway, uh, I got up here to talk about a letter I saw in the, uh, local paper.